Okay, good evening. Uh, this is a special meeting of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five at seven thirty P M. Pursuant to section thirteen of the Open Publics Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and Ben and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and has been posted to the municipal website. Pursuant to Executive Order one oh seven due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID nineteen coronavirus, notice that during this during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics and The Times and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the twenty-fourth day of April two thousand twenty. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and are be maintained throughout the year and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian Comcast Media and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton. Notices have also been placed on all window doors of the municipal complex. Claudia, can you please call a roll? Claudia, you're muted.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Dobkin? Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
German Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two applications this evening. Our first application is seventeen Madison, seventeen Madison Street, case number Z twenty-four dash five seventy-nine, block twenty-eight point oh three, lot fifty-three in the R four B zone. Uh, Karen, are the notices in order for this?
Uh, yes, the board has jurisdiction tonight.
Thank you. Um, Derek, can you well, first of all, is the applicant here, Claudia?
Yes.
Okay. Um.
She'll bring him over.
Okay, Derek, can you summarize your memo for us?
Yes, sir, thank you. Dana Defigurato is the owner applicant um of seventeen Madison Street.
I'm so sorry, I should have sworn you in. Do you swear from your testimony this evening? We'll be truthful.
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dana Defigurato is the uh owner of seventeen Madison Street, the applicant and owner, and she's seeking a C two variance to permit construction of an attic dormer and exception to the required setback side yard setback height combined side yard setback and height to setback ratio. Um, property is located in the R four B zone in the former Princeton borough. Um, the lot is not complying with regard to the sixty-foot lot width, the existing lot is twenty-nine feet. Um, and it's also non-compliant with the lot area requirement of six thousand square feet. The existing lot is four thousand one hundred sixty-four square feet. And the uh property itself is not compliant with the smaller side yard setback requirement of eight, existing is two point seven feet. The combined side yard setback uh requirements twenty and the existing seven point nine. The height to setback ratio um is actually four point five to one, excuse me, it's a typo there and the existing is not compliant. And it's not compliant with regard to the sixty-one and a half percent impervious coverage requirement, uh the existing seventy point four eight. The property is located in the Princeton Historic District, um suggested historic district in accordance with historic preservation element of the master plan and is eligible for consideration for potential historic designation. The applicant applied for zoning and construction approval to renovate the existing house and install two dormers uh at the end of May two thousand twenty-four. The plans were approved, however, it was later determined that one of the attic dormers did not qualify, um did not comply with the required setbacks or height to setback ratio and that portion of the permit was rescinded. The applicant is seeking variance for the proposed dormer. Um, it requires the following variances. Um, the required combined side yard setback is twenty, the proposed just to the dormer is twelve point seven feet and the required side yard setback in this case is twelve feet, proposed is four point five eight and the uh required height to setback is four point five to one and the existing is six point seven five to one. That's pretty much the memo. They've requested consideration under the C two criteria. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address those.
Board members, any questions of Mr. Bridger?
Yes, I do have a question. Um, how does this compare with houses to the side across the street in general neighborhood? In terms of of their um non non compliance with with the existing zoning?
Um. There's a lot of small lots. I can look at the tax map and um give you some more information, but I would say most of them are not compliant. Um, I I'll I'll take a look at the tax map and I can give you some information in a few minutes.
General, that's fine.
Yes, sir. Sure.
Uh, do we have, did Miss Kim have a report on this?
Uh, no, she didn't. Um, we're not doing reports on um like minor stuff in historic districts. It's only the larger stuff. Uh, so it's a suggested uh district, not an actual district, so.
Okay.
And we did approve this last year. What?
No.
Now you didn't approve this one?
No.
No, this hasn't been before the case. It was it's complying except for that variance that I missed on the dormer.
There was another one on Madison, I believe.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes.
There was.
It looks familiar.
Well, it looks a lot. Yeah. They're all small lots.
They're all small lots.
Tough tough uh real estate there.
Okay, um, who will be representing this case to the board?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Henry Chow. I'm the attorney for the applicant, Ms. De Figurio. Um, so yes, as Derek mentioned, this is a small lot, four thousand one hundred sixty-four square feet um with a single family house at seventeen Madison Street and uh the lot is in the R four B zoning district and like many homes there, as Derek mentioned, um is non-conforming with regard to lot width and lot area requirements. Um, so it's an existing non-conform conformities with regard to the smaller side yard setback, the combined side yard setback, the height to setback ratio and impervious coverage requirements and in May two thousand twenty-four, the applicant applied for zoning and construction approval to renovate the house and install two dormers. Um, like Derek mentioned, applicants' plans were approved and the applicant installed one of the dormers, so um we're here just now for the second dormer. And uh, as Derek mentioned, we need C two bulk variances um for the combined side yard setback, um aside your single side yard setback and the height to setback ratio. Uh, there is, I I I am a little confused about the height to setback ratio because um there's been the mention of a three to one requirement. Um,
Actually, I mentioned that was a typo, Henry. It's four point five to one, excuse me. Yes, sir.
So it's actually four point five to one.
Yes, sir.
Jeff, did you get that? That's they sorry, sorry, Jeff is our architect. He's a I was talking to him about that earlier. Um, so so that's essentially it. Um, we have three witnesses, uh Ms. De Figurato, who can um provide some background on the property, the prior condition of the house, her intentions in renovating it. Um, we do have Jeff Fleischer, who is the applicant's architect, who can describe the technical aspects of the dormer and um we were supposed to have Robert Pizzano, my client's engineer, who was actually gonna testify on the variance, uh the positive and negative criteria for the C two variances is 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 he on? Yeah, there he is. Okay, I see him. There we go. Um, yeah, so that's it. Um, I don't know if you wanna swear them in all at once or?
Well, we can, we can do that, Mr. Chow.
Okay.
So I'm gonna mispronounce your name. I'm sure Ms. De Figurito, Mr. Pizzano and Mr. Fleischer, do you all swear or affirm your testimony this evening? We'll be truthful. Yes, okay, we've got your your muted. There we go, Mr. Fleischer. Now you're both on. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so um, yeah, so Dana, if you could just go ahead and describe some of the background and your intentions in renovating the house for the board members?
Yeah, sure. Um, I I wanna thank everyone for being here and um just the interest in making sure we're gonna maintain the integrity of the neighborhood. Um, but um I I and I love the neighborhood and I wanna respect its integrity and its charm. Um, and just to give you a little bit of background, um the house, when I bought it, had been abandoned for about two years and it was in a state of significant disrepair, both the house and the yard. Um, but my intention in renovating the house is to make it as beautiful, if not more so than it was originally and to honor the character and the charm of the neighborhood and and the beauty of the neighborhood. Um, so so that's it. I I look forward to to your input. Thank you.
Do you know when it was built, just for the board's information?
Yeah, nineteen oh three.
Nineteen oh three, thank you.
Board members, any question of the applicant? Okay, Mr. Chow, continue.
Okay, um, so next we have Jeff Jeffrey Fleischer. He is the applicant's architect. And um, if Jeff, can you just um go over your educational background, experience before land use boards in New Jersey so we can get you qualified by the board?
Sure, uh, I have a bachelor's in architecture from New Jersey Institute Technology. I've had a been licensed in New Jersey since uh nineteen ninety-seven and I'm also licensed in Delaware and Pennsylvania. And I've appeared in front of this board probably uh half a dozen times in the last year.
We'll we'll accept you, Mr. Fleischer, as an expert.
Thank you, Jeff. Yeah, if you could just, Jeff, go over some of the technical details of the dormer. Um, I can uh I can put your plans on the screen if you need it.
Okay.
Um.
The the reason for the dormer was to add uh ceiling height to the attic space. It's it's only actually adding about thirty square feet to the attic, but it's providing much needed headroom um which will be a bedroom, a third bedroom in the helm. The, as you can see from the the drawing that's up here, it shows the the height setback ratio um of six point seven five, I believe, to the dormer. The the actual height setback ratio of the existing house is even deeper than that. It's actually twenty to one. Um, so it didn't feel like this dormer would encroach or shade the adjacent property. Um, the the dormer will have siding and keeping with the house. It'll have roof roofing um that matches the rest of the house. Um, and it'll actually match the dormer that's on the opposite side, the rear of the the home. And the view of the dormer will be blocked in the front by the um the existing roof.
And Jeff, just to clarify, the dormer doesn't extend out beyond the existing footprint of the house, correct?
It does not. It's setback four foot seven from the the property line. Where the house itself is two point seven feet from the property line.
It's the face of the dormer in line with the wall of the second floor beneath it. It looks like it sits back a little bit.
It sits back a few feet, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chad, you want this marked as an exhibit?
Uh, yes, please, Ms. Casey.
Already got it. Okay.
This is a copy of drawings that were already submitted.
I understand.
Yep.
Steve?
Yes.
Can I just get back to George on his question about the non-conforming lots? Um.
Yes, you can.
Please, thank you. Um, on the subject side of the property, there are nine properties on that side and they're all non-conforming with lot width and lot area. Um, on the other side, there are approximately twelve out of thirteen properties that are non-conforming um on the on the opposite side of the street.
Thank you.
Sir.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Mr. Chow, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Uh, it's it's just a minor uh part of this application. Did you or your client contact any of the neighbors? It's pointless because all lots are undersized, but uh you didn't attempt or did you attempt to see if you could get additional land?
Uh, no, I mean, there there was there was not an effort to acquire any of, you know, the applicant's neighbor's properties.
Okay.
On that, that wasn't part of the, I mean, we're talking about a dormer, so.
I I know, I know. I just wanted to ask.
Right, right.
Okay, please continue.
Okay. Okay, um, so next we have Mr. Pizzano, who is the site engineer uh who and he is prepared to give testimony regarding the C two variances that we need, the three that were previously identified.
Are there are there any questions for me before I mute myself?
Board members, any questions of Mr. Fleischer? No, you can continue, Mr. Chow.
Bob, can you just go over your educational background and experience before land use boards in New Jersey so we can get you qualified?
Of course. Good evening. Um, and I'm the owner of Pizzano Development Group. Um, we are a structural engineering and construction management company, uh primarily focused in the renovation and repair of residential structures. Um, I have a uh degree in metro science from civil and civil engineering from Lehigh University and I am a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey and Pennsylvania and Delaware uh for over twenty years. Um, I've appeared before uh multiple municipal planning and zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey, including this board. Um, and separately, I'll also let you know that for this particular project, uh I am the project manager working with Dana, the owner um for um the better part of the last year on the ongoing renovation, so I'm very familiar with this building inside and out uh and the surrounding neighbor.
Will accept you as as an expert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, so Bob, um, I'm gonna have you go through the positive and negative criteria for C two variances. Uh, first on the positive criteria, um, can you just explain how this application promotes one of the enumerated purposes of the MLUL?
Sure. Um, so certainly, uh, so when evaluating a a variance proposal like this, we're looking at it from two standpoints, um from the positive and also from the negative, but we'll start with the positive. Um, so under the statute, there's many um criteria that would allow um this positive criteria, but in this particular application, there's two in particular that I I would tell you about. One is to promote a desirable visual environment uh through creative development. Um, that's exactly what this posed dormer does. Um, it takes what is already permitted under the current ordinance, which is an asymmetrical disjointed dormer um and proposes a symmetrical dormer um that would be much more in line with a visual appealing and and aesthetically visual um pleasing view. Um, another criteria uh that uh that that this application also falls under is uh the criteria to promote the conservation of historic sites and districts. Um, we talked earlier about this property being uh not in the historic district, but a historic property and that's exactly what um Dana and this uh application is seeking to do, um is to um renovate from the ground up um a historic building, uh keeping with the uh historic nature of the building um and utilizing uh the existing building and keeping it in place. So on on those two criteria, um I would say this proposal and meets both of those.
Thank you, Bob. And moving on to the negative criteria, do you see this as having any kind of the of a substantial detriment to the public good, to the neighbors? And and two, um, do you see this as impairing the intent of the master plan or zoning ordinance in any way?
Um, well, the simple answer to that is no. Um, and I'll I'll explain that, you know, that the statute uh requires that we look at the negative side as well to see what, if any uh negative impacts would be. Um, and uh we look at whether or not, like you said, this would cause any detriment uh to the public good and whether it would impair the intent of the zoning ordinance. And in both of those cases, the answer is no. Um, it does not create a substantial detriment um uh in in that it is completely consistent with the surrounding areas, um surrounding properties. Um, uh, many of which have dormers, including one of the neighboring properties. Um, and it does not impair uh the intent of the master planner ordinance uh in that this dormer would otherwise be permitted if it were not for fact that it is a pre-existing undersized um lot, as we already stated, that the proposed dormer does not extend beyond the existing footprint of the building. In fact, it's setback um a few feet from what's already already there. Um, so in both of those cases, both the um the positive criteria and as well as the negative criteria, I think this application, in my opinion, satisfies both of those for those reasons.
And Bob, the, I mean, you you couldn't discern anything in the master plan or the zoning ordinance that would um I I guess uh not prohibit, but dissuade this kind of use, a dormer on this type of house, right? Especially not in the historic element of the master plan, considering this is a suggested um area that uh could potentially be incorporated as a as a actual historic district in the future.
Uh, correct. And in fact, uh like I said before, the one-half side of the um dormer is proved and per and permitted and actually has already been constructed. Um, it's just by the nature of this pre-existing condition um that creates the need for this uh variant, so it does not in my opinion, um you violate the intent of the master plan.
I have no other questions for Mr. Pizzano.
Board members, any questions for Mr. Pizzano? Okay. All right, uh, Mr. Chow, um, we will open the meeting up to the public. Do you wanna make a statement before we do that?
Uh, no.
Okay, that's a good statement. All right, uh, Claudia, do we have anyone who'd like to speak on this application?
I see no hands.
Okay. All right, we'll do it in a second. All right, well, we'll close the point public portion of the hearing. And once again, Mr. Chow, before we go into executive session, would you like to make any comments or sum up?
Uh, yes, we we appreciate the board's time in sched scheduling a special meeting for our application and the other one. Um, Ms. De Figurio has been at this for a while and she hopes that she can um get some conclusion on her house renovations and move forward, either move forward or not move forward. Um, we appreciate the board's consideration and hope that um that you took took her statements um well and that uh you will keep those in mind as you deliberate.
Okay, thank you. Board members, um, any discussion? Um, questions, comments? Or does someone wanna make a motion?
I think it's a perfectly reasonable request. And I don't wanna cut anybody else off if they wanna say something, but I would move to approve.
Eve, I agree with you. I think this is a very reasonable request. Um, anyone like to say anything or second the motion?
Yeah, I will second.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Uh, whoever was on first, I'll I'll second.
Okay. Um, any questions on the motion? Okay, Claudia, can you call a roll?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber? Steve?
Steven?
Steve.
Nude.
Nude.
I'm sorry, yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
German Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations. It was touch and go there for a while.
Thank you very much.
But good luck with the house. It's a great street.
Take care. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, we have uh one more hearing this evening. It's case number Z twenty-four dash five twenty-four, three fifty-three Cherry Hill Road Block four thousand one, lot ten in the R two T zone. Uh, Karen, are the notices in order?
Yes, the noticing is in order. The board has jurisdiction tonight.
Claudia is the applicant. I see the architect is their whole team here, do you know? Claudia?
Marina, do you need anybody else over?
Um, we are hoping to get Mauricio on. Um, he's on his phone. Um, he's the homeowner.
Oh, what's his name? I'm sorry. I thought it was Alan. Never mind.
Uh, we don't know who Alan is. But uh Mauricio um is the homeowner. Yeah, he's connected. Seven three two is the phone number. Is he on his cell phone? Is that showing up as the cell phone number?
He's not there.
Yeah.
Someone named Moci? M O C I? No number.
Yes, yeah, that's him. M O C I, yeah.
So I don't see him or anything. Will it come up on the screen at all? You're gonna fix just a a phone in?
Hopefully.
Okay.
Well, see, wait, wait a minute, phone in. He'll be phoning. Are we, will we able to see him though or not?
We're hoping.
Okay.
If the technology allows, yes. He's traveling, but uh one hope.
Well, he's saying is he's declining to be moved to a panelist.
Okay, we'll text him.
Okay.
Claudia, would you be so kind and try again? He's trying. It's not cooperating. Maybe try one more time.
He keeps on declining my requests. Hmm.
I think you confused it with the, because there was an option to accept as a panelist or as a attendee, so he's.
Okay.
Maybe one one more time and if it doesn't work, then Elvira will be representing both homeowners?
I just try again.
Oh, look. Magic, it worked. Yeah.
Can you see me? No.
Well, we can hear you already. That's a step in my direction.
Sorry, guys, I'm connecting from Brazil. I'm in Sao Paulo for business reasons and uh I see the message popping up. I click on the message and I cannot um, I cannot really get connected. I know why, I don't know why. But I see all of you.
Now you're connected.
You're connected. We just, if at all possible, is there activate video button somewhere?
Uh, that's why I try. Sorry, I'm on my iPhone. It's night here and I'm in the middle of the city, so I'm trying to find. Uh, I used to have a lot of uh Zoom call, but this is a little bit complicated. I don't see the video button, to be honest. Um, not sure what the video button is, huh? But in case uh my wife Ella can can speak if you um
Why don't we do this then? Since we really can't have Mr. Clemente testify if we can't see him? Perhaps he he have, we're fine for him to listen in and perhaps he Fine for him to listen in and perhaps he can, you know, convey his comments to his wife. And she'll be the one that testifies. Would that work for you?
Ella, do you feel comfortable introducing the project?
Sure, and I also count on your help to give more details, but of course. Should I start now?
No way.
Perfect. Do we need to be sworn in?
Which she does. Ma'am, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening? Will be truthful?
Yes, I swear.
Okay, great, thank you.
You start, um. Derek, can you summarize your memo?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um. Mauricio Clemente and Alvera Dabla Gil de Diva, excuse me for butching your name, um, are seeking a. D one use variance. To permit two principal residents on a lot when only one is permitted. Um, subject lot consists of an existing single-family home, a one-car detached garage and an existing. Detached two-story accessory structure. Um, which the applicant is proposing to convert to a dwelling unit. The R two zone only permits one principal dwelling. A variance pursuant to NJ SA. Forty colon fifty-five D dash seventy D one is required. Um, they're also requesting setbacks um, under the C one criteria. Property is located in the R two T zone. On the former Princeton township. Um, the existing single-family use is permitted as a right. Subject property is non-compliant with regard to the required sixty-five thousand three hundred and forty square foot lot area. The existing is thirty thousand nine hundred twenty-seven point six square feet. Um, I just note that this. Reflects the part of the lot that extends into the center line of Cherry Hill Road. Um. Is not in, is, is been taken out of the existing lot area. So it doesn't include, if you look at the survey, it goes into the middle of Cherry Hill Road, but. Um, there was a file D that. Recorded in nineteen sixty-four, which dedicated this portion back to the community. Um, the front yard setback requirements twenty-five existing is plus or minus fifteen. And the accessory structure height requirement is twenty feet, one and a half stories, existing is twenty point five feet, two stories. Um. The two-story accessory structure uh, in question is situated behind the main principal. Dwelling, which contains a one-car. Uh, garage, a half bath and a finished room on the first. Floor. And a covered rear porch. Um, the second story can. Contains a playroom. Um, the applicant initially proposed converting the accessory structure to an ADU. Uh, however, the size of the accessory structure. Approximately eleven hundred square feet exceeds the maximum allowable floor area for an accessory dwelling unit. Which is defined as twenty-five percent of the floor of the principal structure or eight hundred square feet. The proposed conversion will. Contain the existing one-car garage and the rear covered porch, a full bath kitchen, living room and a circular stair. The second floor plan is labeled as existing playroom. It is assumed um, that since there's a kitchen and a bath, that this will be some type of habitable space, a bedroom perhaps. The applicant should address the use of this area. Um, section ten B two fifty-five A, which addresses permitted uses. This is in the residential zones, restricts the use of residential lots to one single-family dwelling. The proposed conversion of this space uh, is classified as a principal dwelling for zoning purposes. And the use variance pursuant to NJ SA calling forty. Fifty-five D dash seventy D one, um. To permit two single-family uh. Homes when only one is permitted is required. And uh, as you know, um, with D one variance can only be granted by. The affirmative vote of at least five members. Uh, no variance or other relief can be granted without subs. Uh, substantial det- detriment to the public good and will. Um. Substantially impair the intent of the, and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Um. The special reasons um, to justify the relief as requested as required by statute, these special reasons must be shown to be unique or peculiar to the property for which the variance is requested. And not generally applicable to the neighboring properties. Reasons why. Strict application of the zoning prohibition of the requested use or development would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of land or buildings involved. Evidence that the requested relief may be granted without. Detriment to the public good or the impairment of the intent of the zoning plan or master plan and the, the zoning ordinance, it's also known as the negative criteria. Um, they should also describe the applicant, how the proposed plan relates to the master plan and the proposals. Impact on the neighborhood, community needs, set forth the legal arguments for the proposal as well as other pertinent information. Um. The burden of proof is on the applicant to demonstrate the special reasons, special reasons um. May be found where the proposed uses inherently serve the public goods, such as school, hospital, public housing. Where the owner would suffer undue hardship if. Required to use the property in compliance with the permitted uses in the zone. And where the use would serve the general welfare because. The proposed site is particularly suited to the proposed use. Um, the existing structure uh, does have. Uh, non-compliant setback to requirements fifteen. The proposed and existing will be eight point two feet. And the height to setback requirement is one to one point five and the proposed is one. To two, the applicant has requested consideration under the C one criteria for the two. Bulk variances that are triggered by the conversion of the property to a. Principal dwelling. Um, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to address those. That's the brief synopsis of my memo.
I do have one question. Is that, is in the, appears in the back of the existing structure is a. Is, is like a one-story. I'll call it a shed. Is that included in the area? In the overall area calculation?
Do you mean the existing garage or the?
Well, what's in the back? It's got no doors on it. And a bunch of debris out in front of it.
What, what? Are you looking at a picture or?
Um, you had a photo. Maybe uh, maybe Ms. Ravino can discuss that.
Yeah, I, I see what you're talking about. I don't know. It looks like a wood storage area maybe or?
I don't know. I just want to know if included in that eleven something area.
No, it's not. It's, it's not included in the FAR.
It's not. Okay. All right, okay. That was my question.
Yeah.
Um, board members, any questions of Mr. Bridger?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to clarify. The size of the accessory structure is eleven hundred and on the. On the plans, I think I see a different number. Uh, one thousand fifty-two is. Better.
I calculated it as eleven hundred. But it still exceed the eight hundred or.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions on Mr. Bridger?
Well, I do have a question. It, it may be Mr. Bridger or Ms. Casey. And that is. If. The, this had been. An application for an ADU with a variance on the square feet, would it have been? A C one or D one?
Uh, I mean, ADUs are limited in size to the eight hundred square feet or the twenty-five percent of the FAR of the principal structure, so. You have to be within an ADU. Size to be considered an ADU. That's why this is a D one, because it's, it's. The existing structure is. Too large to be in and, and considered an ADU, so it's a principal dwelling and you can only have one on a lot for the. Permitted uses under ten B two fifty-five A.
So.
No.
So it would be a D variance, George, because the use would not be permitted. It does not meet the standards or criteria for an accessory dwelling unit. So. It, it's the use itself. Uh, and the proposed structure, which is not allowed. It doesn't qualify as an ADU.
Because my question is. Can you have a variance from the requirements of the ADU?
Well, because it's not classified as an ADU.
What?
It's too big to be an ADU.
Well, it would be an ADU with a permitted variance that the board permits. That's my question.
No.
No, okay, all right, thank you.
I have a follow-up question.
Please.
It, it seems to me that we're actually being asked something much larger, which is to. Overrule the. Allowed, you know, the single-family. Dwelling. Zoning. And that seems to me to be kind of a bigger ask than what George just. Brought up. And I, if this is something that we can. Rightfully. Vote on and approve or disapprove, then let's go ahead, but I. That's what hit me earlier today is that it seems that we're being asked to. Overrule the zoning and that seems a little bit bigger. Than. Whether or not a porch is. Bigger than what's normal in a neighborhood.
Well, Eve, Eve, I mean, you. You're being asked to give them a use variance to allow two. Uh. Dwellings. On the property. So. Do you have the jurisdiction to do that? Yes, you do. But you're correct noting that. This is a different request than the way George was framing it, which is. Well, it's an ADU. It's just too big. So you're, you're correct. In the way you're looking at it and um. But. You, you have the, it's within your purview to, to allow a variance like this. Except you need to explain, as you do with every variance. What's the basis for whether? You decide to approve um, or deny.
Well, I guess. It surprises me in a way that we could rule on, vote on this, but. Uh, it then makes me wonder why we. George's question, why, why the AD, why we can't. Say that it's not a permitted, you know, I, I don't know how to.
Well, may I, may I, maybe frame it this way? We allow variances for a lot of things. Why is the ADU? Uh, uh, ordinance immune to the variance concept?
It's not immune, it's a.
I mean, that's what you're saying. We can't make an ADU variance.
Well, this isn't an ADU. It doesn't qualify as one. That's the whole problem. That's the reason we're here, George, you know? That's the reason it's a D one variance. It's a, requires five votes, shows special reasons. Not harm the zoning plan, not harm the, the zone ordinance, so. I, I, if it was smaller. Then it would be just setbacks. If it was eight hundred square feet, then. You could rule on the setbacks of the, the ADU.
Well, it is an accessory dwelling unit. It's just.
No, no, actually, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Michael. Go ahead.
Isn't, and, and you know, I could be wrong, but I. I also had all, all these thoughts. On this that have been expressed and back and forth in my mind. There are some hard restrictions. On qualifying for an ADU. At all. You can still go with side yard setback if you satisfy the basic. Height, square footage. Type things. You can have a slightly smaller lot. But I think George's question and, and what Eve is getting at. Is there a hard? No, you don't qualify as an ADU. Some types of restrictions. And I think what Derek is saying, yeah. You never get to be an ADU. If you're above. The eight hundred or twenty-five percent. You're out of the ADU ball, ballpark.
So if they were to come back in and say. We're going to. Take down a portion of the existing structure and bring it into conformance with an ADU. They can do that.
Correct. Come here. Remember, the accessory dwelling unit is accessory to the single-family home.
Right.
If you cannot meet the basic criteria. For an accessory dwelling unit. Then, as Derek has determined. This now is no longer an accessory dwelling unit. It moves into the realm of being. A second principal dwelling. And. So. That's not accessory anymore under the ordinance. The ordinance has created these standards. The idea being that. The size. Is important. And that it's tied. That's why the size is tied to. The square footage of the principal dwelling. So. Um. This is why. Simply saying. Okay, it's too big. We just want a variance from that. Is, is uh. Not. Not in accordance with. The definition of what an accessory dwelling unit is. At this point, as Derek has determined. The use and the structure, they don't conform anymore. They don't, it, it's. If I have a very basic definition of what something is, like a single-family home. There's definition of a single-family home, but I want to build a two-family home. Well. I don't think I could say to the board, no, I just need a variance from the standards for a single-family home, because I want to build two-family home.
Well, isn't that what we're being asked to do right now?
You are being asked to grant the use variance now to allow. A second principal dwelling on the property.
Yeah.
Zoning does not allow that. It is a use that's not allowed. So. The applicant is before you to say, well. And I, I'm not, you know, I'm not going to second guess what their arguments are or going to be, but. The point is. This is the ter- determination that's been made by your zoning officer that. It is not. It is no longer meeting the cri- basic criteria for an accessory dwelling. And that's based on the size.
And two single-family dwellings on one lot are specifically excluded. In this town.
That's correct. In this zone, yeah, actually throughout the. In a residential zone, you can't have more than one principal dwelling.
And, and in, in this particular zone R two. You can't have a duplex. You can't, you can't have a two-family, one-structure home. As, as Eve was pointing out, it gets to be a whole different. Lift. You can only build as a right. One structure that contains one family.
Or a structure within ADU.
Correct.
That meets the basic criteria.
It's the basic criteria, exactly.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions or comments before we allow the applicant to start?
I just have a real quick question. Um, so the lot area. The existing lot area is. A little less than thirty-one thousand square feet. That's the, the, okay, and, and the applicant agrees with that?
I discussed it with the architect, I mean.
Yeah.
And it, and it's been recorded on the tax map. In a filed D from nineteen sixty-four, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Uh, I have a, a. A question that I guess I'll ask, um. Perhaps after the meeting, because I don't want to take us down a rabbit hole. Um. So I will do that after the meeting. Sorry.
Okay. Any other comments, questions before we start the hearing? Okay, um, please start your presentation. I don't know who is going to begin.
Um, I can start with a quick introduction. I'm the applicant, Alvera. Um. So when we bought the house uh, ten years ago, it came with this additional structure. Um, we call it a barn, um. And now we are not really planning to. Change anything, to build anything extra, so we are not changing the, this existing structure. We would like to. Make it uh, usable, to make uh, use of it for our family. So, um. When relatives come, my mother is going to arrive. So we will have a place to stay for them to. Uh, to stay comfortably. We already have a bathroom there. But we would like to. To just enhance it a little bit, so. Um. Yeah, the, my mother can. Take the shower uh, properly without uh, coming to our house. We would not like to change the external structure, what you're discussing now, you know. Because we don't qualify, it will be too disruptive. For the fa- for the neighborhood, I think, and for the, for the overall look of this structure, um. Uh, the changes that we would like to do are, you know, minimal to interior. Um, the stairs and the bathroom, uh, and the kitchen.
Ma'am, do you know when the, the house was built?
Um, when we bought it, it was almost one hundred years old. I think it's nineteen, so we bought it ten years ago. Um, it was ninety-eight. Years old, so now it is one hundred. Yeah, eighteen.
Hundred plus, okay.
This struc- this structure.
This structure is fifty years old, so we know that it's there since fifty years, fifty, fifty years ago.
And, and you've given us no plans of what you intend to do on the inside.
So we want to use it for family. So we want to use it for family use. We have relatively small house. Uh, we are five, uh, the kids are growing. We have three boys who now share one bedroom. We have uh my mother uh coming, you know, we we uh, my mother lives in the other country. My husband's family also lives in another country, so we have some visitors sometimes. And our house is just not enough, so that structure, that's our idea is to use it for the family, for the family stays when we need it.
Okay, I what I was asking is you've you've given us no plans. Is that bathroom on the first floor or the second floor?
Um, I haven't been sworn in. Uh, maybe we should do that and then I'll help Ella.
Okay.
Of course. Um, Ms. Rubina, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
As a project architect, is that correct?
Yes, I am, and I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey and the state of California and have testified um in front of this.
We'll accept you as a professional.
Thank you. Uh, we have submitted plans that include the interior existing plans and proposed plans. So they may have gone missing, uh, but I also have a presentation, um, whenever you guys are ready that I could um, walk everybody through.
Okay, one it's your.
Would would that be okay right now?
It would be, yes. Well, is the is the owner done testifying?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Fine, please continue.
All right. Hopefully, everybody could see my screen.
Yes.
Yes, wonderful. So um, this is the um survey that the owners um have from when they have purchased the house. Um, this is the um existing home where they live, as Ella described, with three kids. Um, they have a freestanding little one car garage, and then they have this structure that contains garage. Um, kind of a, we're not sure what area next to the garage. It does have a, what we would call a powder room, because it doesn't have a shower, but it has a um sink and a toilet. And it has a open playroom on the second floor, and it has an exterior stair. And it has what we've been calling a porch in the back. So to get everybody oriented, this is the existing home that stands up front along Cherry Cherry Hill Road. Um, these are the photographs of the existing building. Um, so it's made out of concrete block. Um, this is the the garage. This is the view into that portion where the bathroom is, and that's the playroom upstairs. And then the only way to get upstairs right now is this exterior stair. Um, to get everybody oriented on um on the property. Unfortunately, where the existing building stands, it doesn't meet the um setback requirement. Um, probably because it may have been built prior to setback requirements, but it is where it is. Um, and then these plans are hopefully um are going to be useful in explaining what's going on. So right now, there's a garage door. There's kind of, you can sort of pull into this garage space and it's just open and it has windows all around. Um, there's this room that is sort of entry slash bathroom. Has plumbing, uh, and as you could see, there's no connection to the upstairs, so you kind of have to go back out and go up the stair. Um, and then there's this, we're not one hundred percent sure what it was used originally, but to us, we call it porch, feels like porch. Um, and then on the proposed plan, there we are not proposing adding anything on the exterior of the structure. Uh, we are proposing to close the um garage door, put a a people door. And then in the bathroom, we're hoping to add a shower, as Ella described, that if they have guests who wanted to um, take a shower at this little structure, um, they would be able to. And we had multiple conversations with um Derek, since the structure is existing. His feeling is that if we were to just remodel, you know, the the toilet room as it is, then there wouldn't be any issues. However, the minute you add a shower, it becomes a a dwelling unit effectively. So in order to have a shower, here we are, we're having a D one variance. Uh, and then this.
Also adding a kitchen.
Yes, I'm just getting to that exactly. So the proposed would be to have a small kitchen added in this kind of open space here and hopefully an internal staircase to allow one to go up and down between the two floors. And then clean up this kind of a, as Steve pointed out correctly, kind of storage of you know, unclear what, and make it into an actual porch in the back. So we're adding a shower, we're proposing to add a kitchen and an internal stair. On the second floor, you just right now come and it's one big open space with the, you know, just kind of couches and toys. Um, it's finished space. Um, and then here, we're, the only difference will be that we would add a stair that goes up and down, and then you see the roof below, there's nothing on top of the porch. Um, from the exterior, this is literally the way the building is right now. You could see this is where the garage door is. It is too close to the property line. Um, it happens to be two story. The most finished space out of all the finished spaces in this building is the upstairs. Uh, the bottom is kind of not exactly in the greatest shape. Um, so no exterior changes are proposed, you know, no additions, nothing. Uh, so here are the options that we have in order to and as exactly the same logic that you guys were asking, we we thought this would be an ADU. And um, we thought, okay, well, how how does one make this into an ADU? And um, so one option is to demolish the whole thing and build a conforming ADU. We're not asking for any FAR variances or anything like that. Um, so it is possible for the homeowners to take down the entire building and build a conforming ADU without variances. Um, another option would be to remove the second floor. Uh, but that, given the the concrete block building and the the really the most useful space in this building is the second floor, because it is a big open playroom, which is really needed in this situation of a small house plus, you know, entertaining three boys. Um, or the alternative is for for the homeowners, if they were to make an addition to their existing house, they could get to the point where this structure would be, you know, twenty-five percent or some kind of other form of making making this balance out so that it would be an ADU. So we felt that doing all of those things, the strict application of zoning is really a hardship in this case, because what they're really proposing is reusing an existing structure that existed for fifty years. The changes that they're proposing are incredibly minor. Um, you know, they're adding a shower, adding a small kitchen and an internal stair. That compared to demolishing a whole structure and building from scratch feels like it's a it it's a very different project. So we believe that um if this is not allowed, the the only possibility, they can't add a shower, they would basically just have to continue using this building. Um, and we did discuss with Derek, what if we just add an internal stair? And he feels that adding an internal stair will still trigger all of these variances. So something even having an ability to go, you know, to the bathroom from the playroom still causes all of these issues. Just the building itself, as it exists, is very nonconforming. So we believe that the special reasons, um, as you can see from this tax map, this funny shaped property here, there's nothing typical or usual about this property is very odd and unusual. So this is not going to set some precedent that everybody else is going to follow. Property shapes, both property shape and size is unique and peculiar and does not apply to neighborhood properties. And the key thing here is that this building exists. This is how this property came. It predates zoning. It's just kind of a peculiar situation for this particular property. Um, we believe that the possible positive criteria is that this is an adaptive reuse of an existing building with only minor alterations that will achieve similar results as one would get if the whole thing were demolished and construction. And we feel that the positive environmental impact of reducing landfill and saving embodied energy is important here. Also, if this was a demolition start over, this would be a very different major project that would be a lot of noise and nuisance inevitably associated with a construction project and would have an impact on the neighbors. And also, we believe that a positive criteria is ability to utilize this existing building, which is sort of in not the greatest shape, but bringing it up to a usable standard would really be kind of an improvement for everybody. Uh, we looked at the master plan and the relationship to the master plan. So the master plan definitely encourages adaptive reuse of buildings. So there's a whole section that in the ideal world, we're trying to as much as possible achieve things without having major demolition. Um, and even though this is not an accessory dwelling unit, um, it is in fact very similar because it is an accessory structure. So in our master plan, I thought this was really interesting. This um land use two point O section um says creative legacy provisions to permit changes to lawfully existing nonconforming lots and buildings that do not exacerbate preexisting nonconforming conditions. This would reduce the cost and time for projects that would otherwise be beneficial to the community. So it feels like, whoops, this pro- this number eight literally describes this project where we have a structure that exists. Right now, we just don't have provisions for how to deal with these preexisting structures that don't quite fit the contemporary code. Um, we we are failing to see the negative impact here, but um just to reiterate. Um, so two dwelling units, even though it would be primary and an accessory, would be allowed. Um, the relationship one being larger, one being smaller, is maintained very similar. So we're not asking for exceeding any FAR, we're not adding anything, we're not impacting the neighbors. We feel that utilizing the structure the way that it is is actually way, way better for um for the neighborhood. So that really um summarize our plan of action here. Hopefully, um, we have explained this clearly, but if anybody would like me to go back and um point anything else out on the plans or um, I understand this is a a small project with a complicated concept here, but um hopefully, we we've explained what we're planning to do.
Mr. Bina, two quick questions. Uh, do you want this marked as an exhibit?
Uh, probably, you would know better.
Okay, that's fine. And did you prepare um all these slides?
Uh, yes.
All right, thank you.
Can you tell me what the, and I can't read it on the drawing, what's the dimension of the existing building exclusive of that porch you call it?
It's twenty-five feet. Uh, this is a, this is a good dimension. Are you able to read this? Twenty-five feet, four and a half inches by twenty feet, eight and a half inches.
So, okay. So it's about a thousand square feet on two floors.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so I'm getting um one thousand fifty. I'm not one hundred percent sure, maybe Derek counted the stair. I'm not sure how how did he arrive at um eleven hundred? I I'm getting ten fifty.
But the bottom line is it's over the.
Sorry, um, the porch, it goes just two forty-nine, so I got um.
So you added the porch into it.
Part of the porch is exempted, but the portion that's over.
Oh, got it, because porches are only allowed to be two hundred square feet, and this existing porch is a little bit.
So.
Got it, okay.
All right, thank you. Um, that's all I had to ask. Um, board members, any other, any questions of the applicant or Ms. Rubino?
Uh, I have a question for Derek, actually.
Would you like me to keep sharing or stop sharing?
Uh, it's fine. I mean, uh, yeah, I I don't need the.
Take it down in case anybody would like to see it again, happy to share again.
All right. Yes, please.
So if this um structure did not have a kitchen, what would it be? It wouldn't be a dwelling unit, right?
It it is what it exists today.
Category.
Yeah, I mean, it's a nonconforming structure regarding the setback and the height and it's just one of those odd situations where it's uh, you know, I don't know what the initial use was of this building. I could not find any records in the tax department on it, so. I was hoping to find out. I couldn't find any permits for bathrooms or, you know, improvements to it.
So if if they had the the living area, the shower, the toilet, everything and the stair, but no kitchen, it would still be considered, or I I'm sorry. If if the stair were in, but no kitchen, would that be a dwelling unit, or is it just an accessory structure?
Well, it doesn't have a bath now. It, I mean, it has a half a bath. It doesn't have a shower.
So what triggered?
Okay, I'm I'm trying to understand the
Well, when you put a full a full bath with a shower, it leads one to think that it's going to be habitable space.
Right, but is it two principal dwellings if it didn't have a kitchen?
Well, I mean, I have to draw the line somewhere. You put a bathroom, a full bath with a with a shower, then I think it's.
Then it is, okay, okay, got it.
Okay. Um, I have a question. Um, so we're trying to put, the applicant is trying to put two principal dwellings on a lot that's already substantially undersized. Is this a situation where it's appropriate to have the applicant try to purchase additional land on either side? To temper any of this?
Um, the, I'm going to attempt to answer this one. Um, so we are not exceeding allowable square footage that is allowed to build on this property. We're meeting the requirements for how many square feet are allowed on this property. Even if we had more area, two families still not allowed. So no matter how much area we purchase, we would still be in the same conundrum.
No, I understand that.
Yeah, so unfortunately, that wouldn't help us.
What I'm just trying to say is as a practical matter, maybe that would be a consideration, something you might want to consider. Um, since you're having a more intensive use of one of these structures now.
I I think that the way to, we believe that this would not be a more intensive use than an accessory dwelling unit, even though it 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 doesn't meet the requirement, but the use is the same. Somebody will have a house that is the primary dwelling unit in a smaller other place where um family members could stay. So the intensity of use is effectively exactly the same as it would be allowed. But unfortunately, the shape of the existing building, the fact that it's two story doesn't fit into the current ADU requirements.
Right, and so it's it's really not allowed. Um, but I, okay, so the answer is no.
Okay, we we wish.
No, the the answer is no, you're not interested in purchasing additional property. Okay.
Yeah, and they wouldn't help unfortunately, but thank you.
The, I have a question. Derek, what is the maximum allowable ADU area for this property?
It's eight hundred square feet or twenty-five percent of the floor area of the principal dwelling, which in this case is it's like uh. it's like uh, two thousand square feet, let's say. That's the house I, it would have, it, that's even less than an eight hundred square feet, so.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So we would have to remove a substantial portion of the second floor, but we would still have a problem because it would still be a second floor and it would still wouldn't work because two floors are not allowed at that location.
Two floors are not allowed?
Right. The two-story accessory structures are not allowed to be this close to the property line. It's eight feet to the property.
That variance issue.
Yeah, we, 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 we've tried that.
Well.
Like, what else can we try?
I mean, in theory, in theory, you could take the porch off the back, cut back the first floor in the back or the front, make that your porch and, and bring this thing down to eight hundred square feet.
Yeah, but we would still have the issue with the two-story.
Yeah, I know, but it would still, it would get it closer to an ADU than a single-family dwelling or two single-family dwellings on one lot.
I see what you mean, so that we would still need variances, but it wouldn't be considered a, so we thought that if we left the garage as the garage, then we wouldn't be having this issue. But Derek d- doesn't seem to agree with that.
Well, you already have a garage, so I think.
It is already a garage, so, but Derek believes that, that even if we keep the garage as the garage, which we were happy to do, it would still count towards the area.
Okay, but, but the, uh, in, in my opinion, this could be crafted in such a way that you could, you wouldn't have two sing- I, I'm very concerned about two single-family dwellings on one lot. Specifically excluded throughout the municipality. And there's ways to get around that. Which are less onerous than, in my opinion, than allowing the two single families on one lot.
So for example, if we were to keep the garage as the garage, which we were really totally fine doing, the, the actual living space would be below eight hundred square feet. It wouldn't be. But then it still doesn't solve the problem.
Marina, you mean the garage area of this second?
There is an existing garage as part of this building, which we were hoping, we, we were proposing we would keep it as the garage.
Not the freestanding one, just to be.
Yeah, but the.
There's one in the middle between the two buildings.
Exactly. So if we were to just keep the garage as the garage and not make it living space, which is totally fine, Derek believes that that still doesn't get us to be an ADU.
But you could leave the existing freestanding garage the way it is. And then you could modify this structure, in my opinion, minimally, and get an A and, and create an ADU that might need variances, but still an ADU.
How do you feel we could modify this minimally so that it's still an ADU?
You leave, well, in my opinion, and you're the architect and I'm not.
Right.
You take out enclosed area on the first floor and make that a porch. Allow the second floor to overhang the first. Get rid of the shed in the back and bring the area down. You have to bring it down two hundred square feet. So.
So if we were to take a portion of the existing garage, let's say, and convert that to a porch, would, would that be like you're suggesting? Bring the area down below eight hundred square feet? Then we could bring it to, it's not a, oh, second.
A second, a single-family home.
But it's an ADU.
Can I interrupt a minute? Steve, I, I know you and I disagree on this, but I don't think it's our point to help them redesign this.
I know, I'm just trying to, I, and you're right, Stephen. Um, what I'm just trying to say is, is they're saying that this modification is a hardship and I don't necessarily agree with that. And that was my comment.
No, I know, I, you know, I'm.
Yeah, it's fine. I understand.
I agree. I, I know what you're saying. I think it's fine.
We have tried any way that we could think of to make this an ADU. Uh, we have, you know, the, the original plan was to convert this to an ADU and we thought that we've tried pretty much everything. And we were told that the minute we put in a shower, the structure is, the structure is, you're done. You're, you're, you're no longer qualifying. So I do appreciate your help. If we could say, look, how does one bring this to an ADU? I don't think we would, without demolishing the whole thing or taking down the second floor.
Okay. Alright, I guess we disagree on that. Okay, it's fine. Um, I understand what you're saying. Okay.
I have a couple of questions. The honor keeps referring to this as a place for out-of-town guests to stay. Or you refer to it as a playroom for three children or so. You don't have any bedrooms designated. And I'm, the first question I have is is it gonna be a bedroom upstairs or is it gonna be a playroom?
I am not sure what the distinction is. Because um, you know, it, for example, when my parents come to visit, they sleep in an office. Uh, so one could have a playroom with a folding sofa where grandma sleeps when grandma comes to visit. So I'm not one hundred percent sure what, what is the distinction?
Well, I, I, I think Derek in his memo posed the same question and asked you to explain to us what you're planning on doing.
Right, and I think the, the, right, the point is that it's a, right now it functions as a playroom. It will continue to function as a playroom. And then when there are visitors, they're totally fine sleeping on a sofa in a playroom. There are studio apartments that do not include bedrooms. That's totally fine. That's still, people live like that. But if it's critical for some reason to designate it as a bedroom, I, I don't see, they do have a sofa bed there now.
Currently use the space, uh, there is a playroom and the kids play there. But there is also a sofa, so when Mauricio's brother came the summer for a family event, he was sleeping there. He was coming to our house to take a shower, of course, but we didn't have a place for him to stay, so he was sleeping there. Um, our purpose, really why we want to do it is for our family to, when they stay with us, to stay comfortably. So that's.
I, I understand that, but it's, it's just that you talk about two, you talk about family coming and Marina talks about children playing. My concern is that when you sell the place, it become, it will not continue to be a playroom or a place for family to stay on occasion. It will become a second house on the property.
Well, Stephen, it can become a second house now. I mean, it's. You know, what, what you label things is.
I, I do know that, but I mean, we're kind of talking sympathetically about a place for children to play and for parents to stay. But when it is sold, you know, the next owners aren't gonna be talking about a place for children to play and uh, uh, parents to, to do that. I'm just, I'm just, in my head, sounds like a second house to me.
It is a second house.
Clearly a second house.
Okay, so, um, Derek, how does a condo type thing work?
Do you think we could, do you want uh, Mr. Beena to stop sharing?
Yes, sorry about that.
Great.
Not sure what you mean, Harlan.
We had a situation where somebody came to us and it was a brilliant, um, what we thought was a brilliant legal move, a converting um, a second property.
Former borough where you could have two houses on one lot, but they changed the ordinance in two thousand six.
Didn't they make something for a condo though? And isn't that how they circumvented that in some way?
That was before. They were coming for a sub-division and then there, there were so many odd variances between the two houses that was converted to a condo. You were allowed to have more than one principal dwelling on a lot, but that was the borough, which since changed the ordinance and this is in the township. And as you're all painfully aware, we have not consolidated the code yet, so.
Okay.
I say good memory, sorry.
That was the property on Cleveland Lane, not, not Cleveland, Cleveland Lane. Okay. Alright. Any other questions or comments, board members? We want to ask more questions before we open this up to the public. Okay, um, Ms. Rubino or your client, want to say anything before we open this up to public comment?
Hello, would you like to say something or should I try to sum up or?
You can wait, Ms. Rubina, to sum up if you want to hear public comment.
Sure, yeah, and we'd be happy to answer if there are any additional questions from the board or the public. That sounds great. Thank you. Good idea.
Okay, alright, so we'll open this up to the public. Claudia, has anyone indicated they'd like to speak on these app, on this application?
Um, no, not yet.
Okay.
Well, do people, let's just explain to people, they need to raise their hands, so they need to click into the symbol.
Any order, audience who'd like to speak, you raise your hands, there's a button on the bottom and then you'll be recognized and be allowed to speak.
Button on the bottom, raise.
Hi, yes, this is Alan. I think, can you hear me?
We can.
Yeah, I'm, this, this is Alan McMichael. I'm here with my wife, Melinda Roberts, and we're neighbors uh, in the uh, of, of uh, in, in this uh, neigh- in this uh, matter and uh.
Can we have your last name and your address?
My name is Alan McMichael and my wife's name is Melinda Roberts and we're at forty Montadale Drive, which would be adjacent to the property uh, to the east of the property.
Okay.
One, one second, um, Karen, I lost Karen.
Can you do the video at one?
I maybe can do the video.
Great, it's right down there.
Karen, it's muted. Oh.
There she is.
There we go. There we go. I'm sorry, ma'am and sir, could you just repeat your names again? I didn't hear it, so.
This is uh, Alan McMichael and I'm here with my wife, Melinda Roberts.
Okay. And sir, if you're comfortable, can you give us your address?
It's forty Montadale Drive.
And do you both swear or affirm that any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Please proceed.
Do you want to? Go ahead. Um, well, we have a, we have a long notice here, which you, you, if you like, we'll read it into the record.
Please.
That's fine, but when you say notice, that you really mean a statement, correct?
Yes, yes.
It's a statement that we've already submitted via PDF to the secretary, so. I'm not sure whether you want us to read it or just highlight our concerns.
I would think you, it would be good to read it and then it becomes part of the record. Is that?
Okay.
That's fine.
As very near neighbors of three fifty-three Cherry Hill Road, we hereby submit a formal objection against the variances that have been proposed for the construction of a second residence at three fifty-three Cherry Hill Road. We strongly object to the proposed variances. Of course, the owners of that property are free, consistent with zoning laws, to renovate and possibly expand the footprint of variances related to which might, well, uh, not object to their existing residents. So we're look, we're looking at that as a, an option that we would uh, propose to them. But to create a second residence is very different. It's immaterial that it would start from the old unused structure, which structure was obviously never meant to serve as a residence. In any case, if that structure is to be used as a safe living space, implementation of the plan surely will eventually demand its reconstruction from the ground up. While the representation of the owner uh, without any guarantee of evidence, states that the second residence would be for family use such as visits from grandma and uncles, there is no mechanism to make sure that usage is limited in that way. The current owners and any future owners would be free, for example, to rent or B and B, the one or the other of the two residences out to any size group or any number of short-term residents they pleased going forward. I guess that's, that's our understanding. Moreover, there's no material hardship to be faced if quoting from the informal note now distributed to near neighbors, grandma or uncles have to get a hotel or share a room in existing residence. We'd like to have our whole extended family here at our house too, but it hardly qualifies as a hardship if we can't build a second residence on our, we have two acres that makes that wish come true. That is not legally or ethically the kind of situation that counts as a hardship for the zoning board purposes. Finally, even if usage is somehow limited to family use and if that limit could somehow be enforced, our objection would remain enforced and just as strong. If they can create a second residence at their place, the zoning laws should be completely revised to allow the entire neighborhoods of Cherry Hill Road, Crestview, Montadale Drive and Montadale Circle to do the same. For a more personal perspective, the Vogel puts the new residence within just a few yards of our back property line. Uh, we bought the property at forty Montadale Drive and I'm sure the same is true for many others in irrelevant neighborhoods in part due to the existing zoning laws and our trust that those laws would be enforced. We bought the property to avoid the scenario of having a new residence within spitting distance of our own back fence. Indeed, the proposed residence appears to be closer to our own back property line than it is to the existing residence. It clearly changes the nature and character of our neighborhood, especially if other neighborhoods and even ourselves are treated equally and also allowed to construct second residences of our own larger properties. And it's not an upgrade. Certainly, other owners' property values will be adversely affected. Just as a background, we previously owned until two thousand and one, the four-plus acres at three sixty-three Cherry Hill Road. And we were repeatedly informed, indeed educated by the architect, by the realtor and our own very competent and aggressive lawyer, that keeping the existing cozy house in place and creating a main house in the back, even at the location of an existing permanent shed and far away from any property lines, was something we could not do. So we could see the point and never went so far as to request a variance. Instead, we enjoyed the, the cozy house for a couple of years, hope we decide to move to another property happens to be in the same neighborhood adjacent to the old place and we've reined on good terms with our neighbors. Thank you.
You're welcome. Do you have any other comments? Okay, board members, do you have any questions of this neighbor? Okay, thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, Claudia, is there anyone else that would like to speak?
There are no hands.
Okay. Alright, I will close the public portion of the hearing. Um, I'll allow the applicant to make any statement they'd like to make before we go into executive section.
Um, I'd be happy to um, speak a little bit to the neighbor's concerns. So um, first of all, I am assuming that their residence at the previous location um, probably predated accessory dwelling units and they may not be aware that any person who lives in a single-family zone right now is able to build a secondary um, accessory structure on their property and have another family live there and it's perfectly legal. Um, so they're totally able to do that on their property. And should um, Mauricio and Ella would like to do that on their property, they're also within their rights to do so. Um, also the fact that they're converting an existing structure um, really works with the. Um, really works with the master plan and with the goals and that clearly says that we should strive to. Work on adaptively reusing existing properties. And, oh, I'm sorry, existing buildings, um, rather than demolishing and starting from scratch and the impact on the neighbor in the back is substantially reduced when. What the current owners of three fifty-three are trying to do is. An interior remodel of a structure that fully exists, already has plumbing. They're really proposing to add an interior stair, a shower and a little kitchen. And the impact on the neighborhood is going to be substantially reduced rather than demolishing. This existing building and building a completely new, fully compliant accessory dwelling unit. We have tried really hard to make this an accessory dwelling unit. We have tried keeping the garage, we have tried. All of the things, you know, is it the kitchen, literally just putting in a shower and an existing powder room. Triggers this situation as we were told. So we believe that, yes, indeed, it's a hardship for somebody who has an existing structure with plumbing that could. Just be so close to being remodeled and useful and brought to life. Um, to not be able to do that just because it was built prior to existing zoning being in existence. Um, we're, welcome your suggestions or recommendations if we missed something or there are other ways that. We could be thinking about this, we welcome your suggestions, we tried. Bending backwards to make this work. And, um, hope that, um, this meets everybody, everybody's requirements because of. The nature of the existing structure. If this was brand new, we definitely wouldn't be doing this and we wouldn't be putting it where it is. So, um, Ella, do you feel like I've explained that pretty clearly?
Yes, thank you Marina.
So again, happy to answer any questions or any other suggestions, um. Happy to. Hear all, all of your thoughts.
I do have one, one more question. Do you have anywhere on the plans, the heating and air conditioning of this?
Actually, there is a wall, a heating and air conditioning unit, um, that exists upstairs already. It's existing. Um, it's one of those that goes inside, um, and it's heated already.
Okay, thank you.
That's going to handle this, the first floor as well as the second?
If it won't, we'll do a similar unit that it's not an exterior unit, but it would be one of those wall-mounted ones, yeah. But there, there's one already, it's a heated space upstairs already, yeah.
Alright, um, do you want to say anything else before we go into executive session?
Do we want to say anything else? Did we forget anything? I think we're good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um. Board members, um, let's discuss this and. Come to some resolution or make a motion or whatever is your pleasure. Any comments?
If I understand it correctly, we are. Allowed to. I would say overrule the single-family dwelling zoning in. Is that, I mean, otherwise we wouldn't be having this conversation.
That's correct, you, you just need to explain. As you do with every variance, what's the basis? So in this case, if you want to allow what the zoning officer has opined. Uh, are going to be two single-family dwellings. You would need to articulate why. And honestly, not just, not just to allow me to prepare an accurate resolution, but also, um. Because you're, uh. Because in future, if this question arises, we need to understand each case is decided on its own facts, but. You need to be clear about what is it about these facts that would persuade you to allow this? And the same thing when you consider the hardship, um. I know the applicant has indicated they don't know what they could do to convert this or allow this to be considered an ADU. Um, I know there's been some dialogue with the board chairman, so. They're requesting other variant, I mean, they're requesting this variance as well as their both variances as hardships. So, you know, that would be another finding that you would, uh, need to make.
I wish I'd gone to law school.
No, you don't.
Well, for tonight, maybe.
I.
Yes.
I just don't. I, I don't see that there are special reasons here, um. They are getting a use out of the structure right now, they're getting a reasonable use, they're. Even having a family member sleep in there, um, so it's not, they're not being deprived of a reasonable use. Of the, the building as it is right now, um. And I, I don't know that it, it's, you know. That what they're asking is then what the rest of the neighborhood may ask for, I, I don't know that it's not generally applicable to neighboring properties. I don't see anything, you know, unique or peculiar here. Um, and I, I wish that they could. If they wanted to make an ADU, that, that they would make an ADU.
It's a strike, what they're requesting is not with, is not unreasonable. It's, and actually it is in line with the master plan and is in line with the idea of. Minimal impact in terms of on, not only on the land, but in, you know, if they want, they could. Tear, as I said, they could tear it down, rebuild, which would be. A temporary inconvenience, but it would also create, you know, it's not, I. It would create some uproar during the time that it's happening. I understand that the neighbors who spoke. Are concerned, um, and Mr. Schreiber is concerned and I think maybe other people here on the screen are concerned about. Um, when this, they might sell the house. What kind of mayhem would happen next in that space? And I just, I just don't know if we can hold people hostage to the future that way. Because we don't know. It might be, and it's true that it would be. Available for use, so it's, it's kind of an open question, but we can't. We can't assume that that's what would happen. It's, it's a possibility. I just think there's. I, I wouldn't, I would not, I've been thinking about this since this afternoon, I wouldn't. I do not take it lightly to go against. How this, how, that it's zoned as single-family, but. It sounds like, I mean, that's, I mean, we're here to rule on things that are in a gray area and apparently. We wouldn't be talking about it tonight if this wasn't something that we had. Jurisdiction to rule on and we may be creating, uh, a press, we would, we would be if we vote in favor. But be creating a precedent of some sort, although it could also have. Specificity, which I'm probably not gonna, would have to be the one to think it up right now, unless I have any help, um.
Yeah.
That would make it. Um. Not just sort of carte blanche for others. I, that would not be my goal. Michael, it looks like you'd like to jump in.
Please.
Yeah, when you're finished, if, if.
I, I'm, I'm finished for now, I'm, I need to.
Yeah, okay.
Go ahead.
Understood, um. I've, I've also given this a lot of thought from a lot of different angles. Um, I want to start with some things that were said and I struggle with this, I understand. You know, the new goals of the master plan. And I struggle with the fact that the town does not, has not changed zoning. So we're left with the current zoning and that's something that he pointed out in the very, very beginning. Um, the town did do a couple of years ago. A little adjustment by doing the accessory dwelling. Uh, ordinance. Which even in an R two. Which before couldn't have a, a second, uh, structured dwelling unit, um. It now allows it in the R two. Obviously, we've discussed the fact that that is a limited allowing. Of a second dwelling unit. I think the town made that decision at that time, they haven't changed the zoning for R two and. Yeah, we have to waive. The current applicable zoning, matter of fact, as the neighbor pointed out. If they change zoning on the whole zone to allow it not just accessory, then. Any neighbor can do it and that would be fair. Um. There was a statement that the size, shape. Um, of the lot is not an issue by the applicant's architect, I think it is an issue. Um. Not the big issue regarding use, but somewhat. Um, it's a more intensified use of technically. A lot that's forty-five percent of what it should be. According to the zoning and we all know about, um, the odd Princeton zoning sometimes. Um. I think. I, for me, I've seen enough properties that have dwellings on it that I believe some people. Have converted or we will see in the future want to convert it like this. Even minimally and maybe they're only eleven hundred square foot too. And sort of just miss. Or if they're much greater, where do I draw the line? Of, okay, you don't qualify accessory dwelling, but you're still close enough. Is fourteen hundred close enough that I would give a variance? Outside of accessory dwelling ordinance? Um, and therefore undercut the R two zoning? I don't know where to draw that line. I'm sure there'll be more existing structures come before us. But that's, that's my belief. Um. I think. If it was a tighter actually. R three or R four that allows a lot of different. Um, arrangements as far as duplexes and multiple dwelling, that's different. But this is a very restrictive zone. I. If you asked me yesterday. I was close to voting for. But as I thought it all through, as many of you have. I can't get there. I think it will undercut the zoning. I think there is, um, an impact, I respect the neighbors, some of the neighbors' points. Um. And I think. The statement that it will have no impact on the neighborhood, um, I don't agree with that, I won't debate it. Um. And I don't, even though I understand there's an existing building. We're not saying. You got to knock it down to continue the current arrangement. If we were saying that, that might be a greater hardship. But I think the. There isn't a great hardship. Even though the existing building is there. And it's not too far over. And I'll stop there and let others speak.
Well, let me say something here, um, I agree with. Michael's comments as well as some things he either said. In this case, I don't believe there's a hardship. That's, I'll, I'll start at that because I think the, I think the existing structure, given the condition of it. Can be modified if they wanted to go the route of making this an ADU. I think the. So I don't feel there's really a, a hardship. I think the amount of work to bring this, to improve this is going to be. Significant, but we can argue that point, what the amount of work is, but. I think it can be done, so I don't agree with the hardship aspect to this. I have a, a greater issue with the fact that we're, we're being asked to allow for two. Single-family dwellings on one lot. I think that has, that has a ripple effect. And I think that's too great an ask on our part. So, I mean, I'll leave that at that right now, but I, I really. I went back and forth on this as well and I really feel that I can't support this application the way it's being presented. Any other comments, board members?
Would somebody just remind me, um, accessory dwelling unit, can that be? A completely separate. Individual or family or, or is it? Uh, I mean, that's in a sense, it's, it's two, two separate homes on one property, right?
Yeah, it could be sold separately, it could be rented separately.
Well, there are, it can only be sold separately if it's turned into condos.
Yes, yeah.
It's not, the, the, the town doesn't yet allow. Uh, subdivision so that you can have these structures on independent lots, but if you turned it into condos, that's correct. You could sell it.
I, I'd like to make a comment about Steve Cohen's analysis.
Thank you. Go ahead, George.
You know, the question of the garage, uh, this sounds kind of silly, but. If you were to fill the garage with cement and make it absolutely impossible to do, use it as a structure, presumably that turns it into an ADU. So I, I just, you know, there's, there are ways to do, to create an ADU out of structure. With what I've suggested is probably not any viable solution, but there are viable solutions, that's the point.
Yeah. I, I agree with what you're saying. Concrete may be a little drastic, but the. But the thought is there, but I think the, I think the structure can be converted. And modified without, in my opinion, raising, rising to the level of a hardship. Any other comments?
Is it, is it, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say I, I, I'm troubled by the, uh, the, the two principal residences on one lot, um. I, I'm also troubled by, you know, what needs to be done with a existing structure that. Um, it, it seems architecturally, there's, you know, um, lots of reasons to approach it the, the way it's being approached, but. I'm, uh, I am bothered by the fact that it, I, I would, uh. Be much more comfortable if it could have gone the way of an ADU variance of some kind, just for a, a larger size, but. I'm not comfortable with the two, two residences, unfortunately, and there are ways, I think, to, um. Make some use of what's already there, um, it's, it's not ideal, but I think there are ways to get to the. Compliant ADU.
But it would be two residences if it was an ADU.
Yes.
It's not two principal though, right? Yeah, that's a.
It would be two single-family residences on one lot.
But, but just not principal residences.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Um, any other comments?
I wish I understood the difference.
Marina wants to say something, Steve.
Oh, go ahead, please. Wait, well Marina, let us finish first and then you'll, you'll speak. Um, board members, any other questions or comments? Okay, um, go ahead, Michael, did you want to say something?
You're muted, Michael.
Yeah, okay. It's just that. Just that, you know, if it was, if yes, there would be two residences or a dwelling unit, structures on the lot if it was an A D U. But there wouldn't be a use variance.
Right.
That whole elephant goes away.
Exactly.
That's a gigantic difference.
It would be conforming.
Yeah, they could do that as a right if, if they could come in under that. Other than a side yard setback, but that's not a use variance.
To get to the A D U area, they'd have to play around a little bit, but yes, but the idea of going, not going with a single family, but going with an A D U would be significantly different. You're right. Any other comments? Okay.
I did, I did have one.
Go ahead, well.
My hand up was earlier.
We really, unfortunately, the public portion of the comment period, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But your statement was read into the record and, and, and we heard it. Ms. Rubino, do you want to say anything?
Yes, so if I'm, to summarize, uh, what we're hearing from everybody and, um, we tried to make this an A D U. Uh, but it sounds like the approach we tried was by maintaining the garage or removing the second floor, which was not meeting Derek's requirements, but it sounds like Steve just came up with a brilliant solution of converting a portion of the first floor to outdoor space, which might just get us there. So, we feel that if this, if I'm summarizing everybody's, that we would like to see the structure reused. If this structure remained where it is, obviously, but it could fit into the size of an A D U. The use variance wouldn't be there. Right, then we would be asking for side yard and height to set back variance. And that would be fine because that's a hardship due to the fact that that's the way the existing building is. We wouldn't be making it any worse, but then it wouldn't be a second primary residence. Am I hearing everybody correctly? I feel like I'm hearing.
I, I, I think you can take it as some, you heard some guidance.
Right.
You did not hear us vote that it would be fine. And I don't want that left on the record.
Correct.
Michael is correct.
Would you be open to carrying this to the following meeting where we could come back with a proposal where we would try to remove the the extra square footage that is triggering the fact that it's not an A D U?
I from what would be absolutely open to such.
You, if you wish to carry this application to another hearing, it may not necessarily be the next hearing. That's, that's
Available.
Next available, then that's, that's completely your decision. If you don't want us to vote on it tonight, we won't and we could Karen, correct me if I'm wrong, we can carry this to another hearing.
But you can, if we don't have a specific date, then the applicant may need to renotice. And I don't know right now if, uh, Mr. Bridger can give it a precise date, because I know we've got a lot of, I believe there's a lot of applications still coming up, but I'll let Derek speak to that.
I have a bunch in the hopper that are ready to be placed on the next agenda, so, I mean, I already have a big one on April, so maybe May.
So we
We have another one on April with multiple principal dwellings on a lot, so.
Oh.
It'll go a while, I think, so.
Oh, really?
I guess the other, the only other question is if the applicant is going to revise their plans. Then I'm assuming at least their neighbors within two hundred feet would be interested in seeing what they look like, so. But, uh, at this point, if we can give it an exact date, then, uh, the applicant doesn't have to renotice, but we would ask that they provide it to the board secretary at least ten days before the meeting, so it can
No, 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 no. I want it more than ten days. That doesn't give me time to review the application.
All right, then how much, how much in advance would you need revised plans?
At least three weeks before the hearing date.
Okay.
And i- if you, do we actually, Karen, do we actually have to identify another hearing date right now?
You do, or, or we can let the applicant know and they'll just renotice. We'll just inform them of when it, it can next be heard and it will be renoticed.
Would it be possible for us to be on the May agenda?
Well, let's see what
What the day is, that would be wonderful.
May twenty-eight.
Yep.
May twenty-eighth, and then we would have to provide, um, as Derek said, um, documentation to him. I'm sure we'll be in back and forth sooner than that, but at least three weeks prior to May twenty-eighth.
And then Derek, is it fair to let the public know tonight that those revised plans will be posted on the, uh, board's website so that neighbors can look at them?
Yeah, that'd be great. I mean, and they should need to be posted ten days prior to the meeting, so that would be, give me a week to look if there's any issues, but I'm sure Marina will be in touch before then and that should work.
Does, does the May date work, Derek?
It's May, uh, yeah, it does at this point.
And that's what, five?
Twenty-eight.
All right, and for the benefit of other board members, if you, uh, I guess if you don't think you'll be there that night, to please let Claudia know, because this application, well, I'll take that back. If the applicant is able to revise the plan so it's an A D U, then it will not, uh, the approvals they need at that point won't require five votes, but still, it'd be helpful if Claudia could know, the applicant could know if we're not going to have, um, the full board there then.
I'm available, don't worry. Okay, so we
I won't be there. And I, I thought, but he said she wasn't gonna be there.
Uh, I'm not there on the twen-, I thought we were talking about May. Are we talking about May?
Yeah.
Yeah.
May should be okay. I'm not there in April, on April twenty-third.
I'll be there, I'll be there in May too, so I'm sorry.
I should be there in May as well.
Also.
I should be
Yeah.
I'll just have to juggle my laptop on the Upper West Side.
Okay, so Ms. Rubino.
So then the plan of action, we would like to carry this application to the May twenty-eighth hearing, correct? Am I, am I saying that correctly, Karen? With, um, providing documentation to the zoning office at least three weeks prior to the date with the documents to be posted on the municipal website no less than ten days prior to the hearing. Am I forgetting anything?
Yeah.
That's correct.
They do not need to renotice?
That is correct.
No further notice, notification is required. And, um, we appreciate your guidance and brilliant ideas that came out of this meeting. And, uh, we hope that this existing structure could be used the best it can.
Hey, thank you.
Ella, do you feel like you need to add anything or do we have?
Oh, thank you for guiding and thank you for the, yeah, for the, uh, advice and the guidance and thank you for your consideration. We'll prepare for the next meeting.
All right, any other comments? We're done, I guess. Okay, so this hearing is over. Thank you all and we'll see you next month.
Thanks.
No, actually, you'll see us in a way.
It's getting to be too much. Now, see you all next week. Thank you.
Night, tonight, thank you.
Bye, thanks.
Good night.